The Planning Commission for February 4th, 2025. If you will, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance, you are the United States of America, to the people of this city, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, eternal.
That's right. And we thank you for your grace, for your mercy. I'm not going to say it today. Just thank you for this nation's grace, and as it is. Please, in order to these times, just special to our residents, our employees, our internal employees, and just certainly all the other members of the day. It's special to the people of ourselves, and she should be able to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. We'll call it order. First thing I want to go over, we have a new Commissioner, Mr. Garrett Harland, there on the end. Would you like to make a speech? You, the first thing I want to tell you, you have to push the button, far right. There you go.
No.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Clement Ogonyemi.
Here.
Garrett Harland.
Here.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Ray Cardiell.
Here.
Teresa Reynolds.
Here.
Thank you, full, full crowd up here tonight. Can we get approval of minutes from January 7th, 2025?
Motion to approve.
Thank you for that.
Second.
Thank you. Minutes are approved, nine to zero. Next item up to do is elect officers. We need a secretary. Do we have any nominations?
Your nomination, Brent Couch, for Secretary.
Anyone else?
I hereby nominate Brent Couch for Secretary.
Thank you. All right, let's take a vote. All in favor of that, we will vote electronically. I believe. That passes eight to one. Brent used to abstain from yourself, so, welcome. Next item up to discuss is a proposed amendment to the Springdale Code of Ordinance, Chapter 130, zoning ordinance, Article 4, Section 3.4, and Article 6, Section 3.13. Do we have any public comment?
Well, let me explain what we're going to do. What this is proposing, this came from the council, asking the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing on adding the RV use unit 30 as a permitted use in a C2 zone. And I have started drafting that, and by looking at that, I think that, that creates some issues when we start putting an RV park as a permitted use in a C2. The question came up at the council meeting the other night, would be better off to, to create an RV district itself, so it's not, it's not in a commercial district as such, and it creates its own set of standards. I didn't think much of that idea at the meeting the other night, but after looking at it and looking at the possibilities of where I could go if we make it a permitted use in a C2, it would be my recommendation that we present to the council an option of, rather than making it a permitted use in a C2 zone, that we create an RV park district, so that we're not mixing apples and oranges together in a commercial zone.
Any public comment? Any Commissioner comments regarding this conversation? If not, this will be a motion in the second. The motion would be to recommend to council that we look at doing an RV district for future RV parks in our city limits and over our jurisdiction. In lieu of adding a use unit for commercial zoning.
Now, the council still has the option to do the C2 if they wanted to. The other issue, looking at the standards that we have for an RV park, I've been here 28 years, we have never used them once. We haven't, we haven't approved a new RV park, we haven't approved a new mobile home park, and I think to meet the standards that we have now, we need to at least update those standards at a minimum if we're going to do it as a permitted use in a C2 zone. So, that would be my recommendation to the council.
So, would it be an option to recommend nothing until we can work these other things out? Like do nothing?
The council asked for the Planning Commission to hold the public hearing, so I think we need to come back with a recommendation of what we think it needs to happen, or if you guys aren't comfortable making that recommendation, I'll make it from a staff standpoint. It, it's up to you guys what you want to do with it.
Yeah, currently, the way the, our zoning reads, you know, you can do RV park and a mobile home park, which I don't think us or city council would like that. You can also do an RV park as a conditional use unit in A1, which is fine, but the problem with that is conditional use unit, as we know, stays with the current owner, and if that owner sells, then that doesn't necessarily mean the new owner can do it, which causes a problem that they want to sell the property. So, the idea was brought up at city council to add the use unit for C2, but then that brings issues where we have a lot of C2, I'm not sure we want RV parks that. So, my thought is that as well, that I think for the best interest of the city and the fact that North of Arkansas will continue to grow in tourism, I think an RV district is something that would be worthwhile pursuing. So, that would be my.
Now, we propose that we try to get this done in no more than 90 days, so there's not a major delay, but we don't want to do it quickly, just, you know, we want to make sure we get it correct, but for a 90-day period, come forward with some kind of a recommended amendment.
So, Mark, was that a, that was your?
I'm not wanting a motion, I'm just explaining my thoughts, and so if somebody wants a motion in the second, then we can vote for it.
So, I motion to go ahead and have the Planning Commission sit down and set an ordinance for RV park in the future?
So, yeah, so the motion, I guess, would be to recommend to city council that that's the path we take, is come up with an RV district with its own requirements, regulations. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cardiell, second by Ms. Keith. That passes nine to zero. Next thing I'm going to do is go over the items that have been tabled for tonight. First item tabled is R25-08, PP25-02, FP25-01, Large Scale Development L25-05, Apple Blossom West, and then a waiver, W25-02, and then a waiver, W25-08. Those will not be heard tonight, they have been tabled. Up first is items tabled from last meeting. The first one is R25-05, Marlene Benegas, presented by Chuck Bell, Bell Construction. This is to, looks like to rezone from A1 to O1, P1 and MF4. Is there Chuck Bell in the audience? I am coming now. Good evening.
Good evening. We're doing the rezone now, correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure if you have any questions or not, but what they're going to, that, when the road went through there, it created two parcels, and what she's wanting to do is to split off a parcel where the existing tract is and rezone it to, I'm doing this off of memory again, it's residential office, is that correct? And then the second one, she's wanting to rezone for O1, allows that use. And then the, the one in blue is for, I believe she says a church is going to try to be constructed there. The parcel across the street, I'm not even sure if it's buildable yet, I think they have some issues with it, probably should have been bought when the street cut it in half, and, and, and as far as planning, just took it into the right-of-way of the street, but it does have a buildable area on it, I'm just not sure what we'll be able to use and how to use, I'm sure there's some restrictions that'll be built on it if it's going to be ever used. Is there any questions or anything that?
And she's asking for that to be MF4?
That's correct.
Okay.
Want staff comment?
Any public comment? Staff comments?
The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies as recommended for approval, and the O1 encourages development of office and professional uses that provide a transition between residential areas and more intense uses with reasonable building height limitations and adequate buffering and landscaping to ensure compatibility. For the P1 zone, uses that commonly have moderate to large assemblies of people such as churches, funeral homes, membership organizations, and other institutions should be appropriately located, and adequate-sized parcels with sufficient space to accommodate the off-street parking and accessory needs. Such uses should be located so as to minimize any adverse or undue significant burden or adjacent, unadjacent or adjoining land uses. And the MF4 appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors.
Thank you. This will be called for the vote.
Called for the vote?
By Mr. Cardiell. That passes nine to zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Next up is R25-06, Derek Calhoun, doing business as Calhoun Farms, presented by Mark Marcus, Riverwood Homes, NWA. We got two things to review, we have a, a rezone from A1 to SL3, and then we also have a preliminary plat called Butterfield Coaches Colleges. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Mark Marcus with Riverwood Homes, and Justin Jorgensen with Jorgensen Engineers.
Staff comments?
Staff comments?
Okay. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies recommended for approval. Appropriate location for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, and environmental factors. Assure land allocation for residential purposes by providing lots of adequate size. We have one letter of opposition that was handed out to you this evening, do you want me to read that, or do you want that going to, to the minutes as, as presented?
Minutes are fine.
Thanks, Mr. Couch. Any public comment? Call for the vote for this rezoning request?
Called for the vote?
Mr. Clement? That passes nine to zero. Next to review is a preliminary plat, do you have anything you want to say about that, or you want to go straight to staff comments?
I'll just let you go, Greg.
Sure.
Okay, the, the staff will prepare the ordinance, and the council will go, or the ordinance will go to the council on the 25th, okay? For the rezoning.
Okay.
Preliminary plat, we have any staff comments?
Engineering comments. Need to look at the homes that are adjacent to the detention ponds in the neighborhood to the north, make sure they're safe from flooding, submit a PDF of the signed and sealed drainage report, show sod in the pond, drainage easements should be minimum 20 feet wide, make sure the diagonal pipes at the intersections are in the right-of-way or in a drainage easement, submit off-site easements for sanitary sewer prior to construction, add north and south crosswalks to the three-way intersections, need to show an accessible path to the picnic tables, and be great to see some trees in that little park area as well. Parking lanes shall switch sides of the street as appropriate to provide traffic calming. I think Bowen Drive especially needs to have parking on both sides switched back and forth to help with that, since it could potentially be a through street. Street improvements need to go to the south property line, and then we just need some more information about how Butterfield Coach will be widened with formal design.
Other than being subject to the rezoning, it's standard comments only from planning.
Thank you, staff. Any public comments on this preliminary plat? Commissioner, any comments? If not, this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
By Ms. Keith, I need a second.
Second.
By Ms. Reynolds? That motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you.
Next up is C25-01, Marshall Lee's New Fellowship Church, presented by Lena Bergeren. This is requesting use unit 42, church synagogue in a C2. Welcome.
We're here again, where they hopefully provided all the documentation that we need, and we're still applying for the conditional use of the Marshall Lee's Church.
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, there is a legal 40-foot access easement to the south of the line for proper ingress and egress. The off-street parking and loading areas are acceptable if improved, the site contains 16 of the required 18 spots, there's a valid share parking agreement with 3130 North Thompson to the south. Church parking area needs to be striped, including one ADA spot with loading areas. Has the parking lot been striped yet?
There are stripes.
Okay, I, I don't know that, is the ADA spot been striped and the rest of it where you have all these marked? Because my note says it wasn't striped yet.
No, it has stripes, right?
Standard nine-by-19 spaces in a handicap space?
They are marked, unless, unless they're getting big, we can repaint it, but they're marked.
Okay, we need, we need to make sure that they're properly marked in order to meet that requirement.
Yes, they're marked.
Okay, we have a written waste management plan, is requested, indicating plans for waste handling, litter collection prevention, recycling, and cleanup procedures shall be required, that's acceptable. The utilities, does the site have a septic system, or is the site on sewer?
It's a septic system.
Okay, there seems to be some confusion because the adjacent property owner was talking about their sewer lines being blocked because there was dumping of grease into the sewer line, so I, I need to verify whether it is septic or whether it's?
I did verify with, with, with city sewer, and they looked through all the records, and they said there's, there's no records of this property.
Okay, and then you had someone come in and clean out the septic system?
Yes, and that's what I provided the documentation.
Okay, you still have to have a grease interceptor approved by Springdale Water Utilities before you can get the conditional use approved, that's going to be one of the conditions. No screening is required, I'm assuming you're not putting up a sign, because there's nothing that's shown on the plat that you're going to put up a sign. The, is it acceptable, the building was not designed for assembly use, but applicant has been working with the fire marshal to ensure fire code compliances, there's no requirements for landscaping, it is acceptable if those improvements have been made, as I identified, the location and land use is appropriate, but building was not designed. If the assessment and improvements listed above are sufficiently met, site is acceptable. That includes, the grease interceptor has to be installed, approved by Springdale Water Utilities and installed, because we don't want large amounts of grease being dumped into the septic system and/or the sewer line, okay?
And they don't even use those, those kitchens as they're cooking.
Well, then where's the grease coming from?
I don't know what they're talking about.
Okay, this also means that you can't use the bathrooms next door, because one of the complaints was that we had church members going to use the bathrooms next door, you can't do that either.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That is the false information.
You need to step up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. That is false, because we never go to the store next door, we never use their bathroom as well. I don't even know how the store looks like inside, because we don't go there.
Okay, well, we've got written statements that that's a problem, so what I'm telling you is, you're not authorized to use the bathroom next door, they have to be operational and kept up, kept up that way in that facility.
Okay, I understand that, and like I said, we don't use their bathroom, and we never really have problems with ours, so we don't need that.
Okay, okay, and parking, you can't park on the other property?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have your name, please? Because we don't have it.
Can I clarify? The septic was plugged twice, and we already fixed this problem, because apparently those ladies threw the diapers in the, in the septic system.
Okay, well, you're going to have to keep the septic.
They didn't realize that it's supposed to be not used over there.
Okay, you're going to have to keep the septic system going.
Yes, and now it's already, it's already fixed for a long, for a while, and they.
Well, then you need to come up with a regular way of having it cleaned, if that's going to be a problem, okay?
No.
Okay.
Ma'am, what is your name?
Sorry, my name is Minnie, Minnie Hesse.
Thank you.
I'm the pastor's daughter.
Thank you. Any public comments? Commissioners?
We do have the.
Yes, does anybody want that reread or remember from our last meeting, the next-door neighbor comments they had about it? Without any comments, unless there are any, go ahead.
Just a quick question, so I see this letter from Ready Router, do you have a contract with them going forward, or is it, they just came out to check it and clean it and make it functional, the septic system?
Oh, that's a question. I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
So, we see this letter here from Ready Router, they are the people that certify that they checked the septic system last month, do you have an ongoing contract with them, like Ms. Patsy said, to come out and service it quarterly, monthly, I, I don't, I don't know how often, but do you currently have a, a contract with them going forward?
Contract with the people that comes and clean out the septic?
I did provide the documentation from the service that cleaned that septic system, and they said that the, the septic system is operational, and there's no problem with that.
He's, he's asking you, they did it one time, do you have a relationship where they come back on a regular basis and check it?
Relationship with whom?
Do you have a contract with this company or another company that will come back on a regular basis and check the septic system to make sure it's operating correctly?
They usually do, do, once a year, unless I call them with the emergency, they come and check the system.
So, yes, you have a contract with them to come on a yearly basis?
Yeah.
Okay, that was the, that was the answer we were looking for, okay.
I have a question, so, and I know you stated they met a lot of the requirements, or they're still working towards some of them, and there'll be some things contingent on that, but if we approve this, and, and things go different than we're anticipating, what's, what's that scenario look like, meaning no recourse after this, or is there some sort of recourse if things go a different direction?
Okay, with the conditional use, if it is approved with conditions, they won't be given an authorization or business license to operate until all of those are taken care of. Like any conditional use, if there are problems with it, and we have complaints filed, then we can set a public hearing and review the conditional use, and decide whether we want to extend it, give new conditions, or even reject or remove the conditional use. We still have that option with all conditional uses.
Any other comments? If not, most of this will be a call for the vote.
Called for the vote?
By Mr. Couch. That passes nine to zero. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 25th. I would suggest you get as many of these things taken care of before the 25th if you can. If you will restart the parking lot, please let us know that.
I will do.
You need to get an approved, get a grease interceptor through Springdale Water. If you will bring us a copy of your contract with the Roto Router Company, we'll have that on file, and, is that everything? Okay, that covers it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You so much.
Next up is C25-02, Marty Sutton, The Food Truck, presented by Marty Sutton. So, is that the name of your food truck? The Food Truck?
It is.
That's awesome.
Fancy, right? Marty Sutton. Nice to meet you guys.
Go ahead. Sure.
Ingress and, ingress and egress to the property is acceptable, there are two access points on the site separated by 275 feet. Off-street parking and loading is acceptable, they have three designated parking spaces for the food truck. Refuse in service areas with particular reference to items in 102 is unknown, you need to identify on the site plan how you're going to take care of trash and refuse. Applicant has utilized a third party for discharging gray water, staff is waiting on a copy of said agreement. Did you provide one yet?
I did, and I have a copy with me as well.
Okay. Screening and buffering is not applicable, the only signage you will have is on the truck itself, you won't have any other signs?
Yes, ma'am.
The yard requirements are acceptable, the size and shape of the sites is acceptable, proposed landscaping is not applicable. It is generally compatible with adjacent property and in, and in the general district with the following conditions. Cannot operate between the hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. No obstruction of parking spaces required for the operation of any other use on the site. Maintain a site, on the site, a minimum of three parking spaces designated for their use. If a health certificate is required, display the health certificate in a manner visible to customers. No obstruction of pedestrian or motor vehicle traffic flow, no obstruction of traffic signals or regulatory signs, no vending upon a public way, no sound devices that produce a loud and raucous noise in violation of city ordinance, or violate any other city ordinances in connection with the vending operation. Keep vending site clean and free of paper or refuge of any kind generated from the operation of their business. All trash and debris accumulated within 20 feet of any vending stand collect and deposit into a trash container. Submission of approved gray water disposal by Springdale Water. Submission of approved grease disposal method approved by the Arkansas Department of Health. Electric service must be underground permanent service, and no permanent signs are permitted.
Any public comment? This will be a call for the vote.
Called for the vote?
By Mr. Cardiell. That passes nine to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 25th.
Next up is B25-02, HKH Residence Trust. This is a request for variance for roadway dedication, there's also a waiver filed, W25-05, this is a waiver of street improvements on West Miller Road, presented by Satterfield Land Surveyors.
Dana Rose with Satterfield Land Surveyors, representing the client.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the property is being split, correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, and what you're asking for is a waiver not to donate the right-of-way?
That is correct.
Okay, the subdivision regulations require when you split property, you have to donate right-of-way in conjunction with the master street plan. What's the hardship on this one?
The client does not want to dedicate the right-of-way.
Okay, and he's asking for a waiver of, of the sidewalk?
Yes.
Because he's building a single-family home, he's not required to do the street improvements and only build a sidewalk. Would he be willing to do payment in lieu of improvements for the sidewalk, and then that money would be deposited with the city, and when a sidewalk is built with the rest of it, he would, that money would be used and it'll be taken care of?
I don't know if he would be, I honestly don't know.
So, you can't answer one way or the other, so you want this heard as a waiver of the subdivision and a waiver of the, the dedication right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Engineering opposes the waiver of right-of-way dedication.
And you know staff always opposes the waiver of sidewalks, you know? I was going to say something else, but I don't remember.
I did have one more comment, sorry. I think the scale is incorrect on the plat I looked at last.
Do you know why he wants to split the property? Just, do you have any background on why he's splitting the property?
He's building, he's building another house on the, I believe it's 10-acre tract.
It's, it's currently being built, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looked like, is it, I'm guessing because of financing?
Yes.
Reasons, yeah, it's hard to get financing for 53 acres.
Right.
Well, the sidewalk is a requirement when you build a single-family structure, they're not required to do the street improvements. The, the requirement for dedication is because it's being split again, I think this is the third split, actually. So technically, it's a subdivision, and when you, when you subdivide and create a subdivision, you have to dedicate right-of-way.
I did speak with the client, and if, we did kind of talk about possibly if we couldn't get it approved, to dedicate right-of-way just to the edge of the pavement, current pavement of the road.
You have to dedicate right-of-way to what meets the master street plan standards.
Okay.
So, it's usually from the center of the street to the edge of whatever's needed.
Okay.
Or from the property line, if you happen to be one of those lucky people that the property line is at the edge of the pavement, then you would be dedicating from there. But does the property actually exist to the center of the street?
Uh, yeah, it's actually to the north side of the street.
Okay, then that's. Okay, then that's the way it works.
Okay.
Do you want to remove one of these or none of these? You still want us to vote based on the request in front of us?
Yes.
Okay. Any commissioning comments? I will say, and maybe Mr. Couch can comment too. I drove this site today, actually. And Miller is definitely a very narrow road. There is some potential connectivity to some other development. That should, goes to Shaw Park eventually. I think as a, as a city, we definitely want to improve that road at some point in the future and help sidewalks, have connectivity for sure. Whether that's done today is, seems to be a bit much, but I think, you know, not having any recourse of getting a sidewalk or a right-of-way to allow us to make that road better for all citizens in that area. It's kind of hard to, to move forward on, in my opinion.
You want to talk to your client about whether or not he would be willing to do payment in lieu of improvement for the sidewalk? And not dedicate or dedicate and put the sidewalk in, one or the other? So it's not both of them?
I could do that, yes, ma'am.
Is your client here tonight?
I do not think so.
Okay.
And we'll say this, this was tabled last month, so if we tabled it tonight, they would have to restart the process.
Do you want to try to call him and come back later?
Yes.
You want to do that? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll bring this back up. Next up, section is rezoning. Rezone R 25-09 Horsewater Road LLC. Request is to rezone from C 2 to C 5 presented by Will Kelstrom. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Will Kelstrom here on behalf of ICM of America, the applicant on this request. So this is a 3.66 acre tract on the corner of Robbins and Wagon Wheel. We are asking that it be rezoned from C 2 to C 5. So the applicant, ICM of Americas, is a, essentially they supply parts and rentals for infrastructure installation. Kind of a very specific type of business, which is why we need the C 5. So Wagon Wheel Road is a major arterial on you guys' master street plan. There are C 5s all up and down Wagon Wheel between 49 and 71, and there's some even to the east of 71. There are also a lot of C 5-type uses. Heavy equipment rentals, warehouses, truck and trailer repair, just lots of kind of heavy commercial in general. I went and looked on Google Maps and in addition to the fact that there's C 5 zonings all up and down this road, there's probably about 15 businesses between 265 and 49 that are this type of heavy commercial type operation. I think the reason for that is that Wagon Wheel spans between 49 and 71 and then runs over to 265. 49, 71, and 265 are three of our four kind of major arterials through all of Northwest Arkansas. So it makes sense that people looking for this type of zoning would want to put it on that road. So that's why we're asking for a C 5 here and this is why my client's interested in the property. The other reason why I think C 5 is a good fit here is because the code says it's a good fit here. If you go look at the zoning code, or if you go look at the code for the C 5 zoning district and you guys zoning code, it specifically states that C 5 zonings are appropriate on major arterial roads. So again, that's why we're looking to do it here. It's, it's kind of more of what's already there. Wagon Wheel is going to be the main access point and where all the traffic will be going to this development. There will be no reason for anything having to do with our development to go north on Robbins at all. This is really going to mainly involve Wagon Wheel and it shouldn't affect anybody to the north of us. So with that, I'm here if you guys have any questions, as well as a representative from ICM of America, Russell Ball. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Staff comments?
You also are authorized to represent the current property owner, right?
That's correct.
Yes, because, and then he has to understand that if the property is rezoned and the sale doesn't go through, it's still rezoned to C 5. Because we're not rezoning for this client and this operation, we're rezoning for anything that's allowed in a C 5, right? We understand that.
Yes, and I, and I believe the authorization of proxy that I submitted was, was for the two owners.
Okay, I just want to clear that in case anybody was questioning it, because the applicant is Horsewater Road LLC. Okay. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies recommended for approval. Encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers. Encourage the development of light to medium intensity commercial development along arterial streets that provides adequate setbacks and buffering to adjacent residential neighborhood.
Thank you. Any public comment? Please come to the mic, state your name and address. Thank you.
My name's Ron Minett and I live on North Graham and we came to you all, I think the last planning meeting, maybe the one before that, when we were opposing the conversion of the C 2 next door to that, they were wanting to go four and a half acres there for going from C 2 to C 5. And you all did not let that go through. And as, as I pointed out at the time, there are 400 to 500 homes that are within, you know, a mile of that location. And, and everyone we've talked to in the subdivisions have been opposed to, to going from C 2 to C 5. The problem that we're running into is, and, and the city council, the last time when they appealed this, the, the C 2 location next to it, they did not even bother going to, going ahead and, and considering that. There was only one person that made the recommendation and none of the other city council members went back and said, well, we should discuss this. So the, our point is that if you get C, C 5 creep, if you allow that to go to C 5, then the, the concern that we have is then the 16 acres right next to it, and, and the city council members made that point. There is no C 5 except out on Business 71 that's close to that piece of land. For him to say that there are C 5s, yes, if you go out to 49 out there, there are, there are other pieces that might fit the C 5, but there is no between Robbins and, and on Business 71, there are no other C 5s.
There's C 5 on the top right corner of this image right here.
Top corner.
The dark purple? Just to clarify, that there is C 5 close to this location.
Well, is, is, is that out on Business 71? I'm trying to...
No, that's off of Wagon Wheel, towards 71, but not at 71.
Ah, you're out past Chief Truman Brewer, so, okay, if, if you want to say that one's close to it, then, then, okay, I'll agree with you there. I don't know when that was, is that the warehouse that's, that was put up over there that, that's over there currently?
No, it's, there's a, a business under construction there now.
Yeah, that's, that, that's a warehouse. And so, so our, our opposition to this is it's a C 5 creep into that piece of land. Because once that one goes, then, then the 16 acres next door will have the opportunity of saying, look, you know, we got a C 5 right next to it. And that's the problem, that the neighborhoods, the five, 400 to 500 homes are opposed to that C 5 creep that's, that's happening on that piece of land. In that general area. So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Commissioners, any comments? No, this is a call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
By Mr. Couch. That passes seven to.
Staff will prepare the ordinance, it goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We can revisit B 25-02 HKH Residence Trust if you want to come back up.
Hey, good evening.
This is Mr. Hart, property owner.
Yeah, so I think the comments were, we were asking your representative here, would you be willing to do payment in lieu of the sidewalk or give the right-of-way dedication in lieu of asking for both of these?
Okay, so the, the thought process I had was, you know, I, I bought 53 acres in two different blocks over about five years ago. And my house that I'm building is, it's about 1,000 feet off the, off the road. And no plans to develop this, my personal home. I bought it as a farm and plan to be there my, the rest of my life. I, I found it difficult because I own about 950 feet of frontage. I built a really expensive fence across the frontage, more than 32 feet off the road. And only for financing purposes have I asked for the ability to subdivide. And I didn't necessarily just think it was in my best interest to just go and donate an acre of land for, you know, 20 years from now if, if we needed to widen the road. And then additionally, I wasn't sure if you guys had seen the Arkansas DOT plans, but at Miller Road, there's, it's actually going to be right-in, right-out access only onto Miller Road. So you can't actually make a left turn on or a left turn out.
I think the, the question is, I think there's some desirability of the city to be able to connect between your area, the subdivision across the street from you, all the way through to Shaw Park, which is about a mile and a half via sidewalk. And obviously, you know, that would require Miller Road to be improved quite a bit, which I think, you know, at some point that will happen. So we're just trying to ask either landowners alone Miller Road to either pay, do payment in lieu of, to be able to put sidewalk in front of your location and then help facilitate that process or give us the variance or, or give us a right-of-way dedication so we can improve that street so it will be more pedestrian-friendly, active transportation-friendly. Because I think that would be, that area is going to increase in population and walkability in the future. So that's the requ, that's the ask.
Yeah, originally what was shared with me is it was for future widening of the road. So is it widening or is it for a sidewalk?
It's for both, so Miller Road's classified as a collector's street, so it would need to be widened and there would need to be a sidewalk and curb and gutter and all of that put in to bring it up to the standard. When I measured from the center line of the road, I don't think your fence has affected at all. It looked like the sidewalk would sit in front of the fence.
I think the fence is at 33 feet.
Right, so it wouldn't affect the fence. And then also there's a 15-foot utility easement that already runs the entire stretch of the property for a water line. I mean, it's, it's... The remainder that we're asking you to dedicate is about .18 acre that's not already taken up by a road or utility easement.
Okay, and then when, sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
Of course.
When you said collector, if, if 112 is going to be limited to right-in, right-out only, so again, there can't be a left turn out of Miller Road or a left turn onto Miller Road, how would it, how would it be a collector?
Collectors are designed to move people from residential areas to larger streets. So you have Spring Creek Farms that's just been built. They would be leaving their local streets, get on a collector's street to get to an arterial street. That's the way it's classified and we would improve it to three lanes with eight-foot sidewalks on each side.
And that's a standard collector area. It doesn't matter how it ties into 112. There are areas when you can do U-turns, there's a roundabout at 112, I mean at Wagon Wheel just to the north of this, right? So there are locations that you can go in there and turn around and go the other direction if you want to.
Okay, and did it just become a collector, like in the last six months?
No, it's been over a year since the master street plan has been passed.
Got it. Okay. And then, sorry, I, I wasn't aware of the process when I went through it originally. So what, what are my options at this point for, because I think, as I was told, it was because I bought the 36 acres and then I bought the 17 acres next to me, which made it more of a subdivision. So could I not just go and replat it all as one lot and then, and then subdivide it into a 10 and 43? And then it's only two lots? And then I wouldn't have to do that? Because I don't think you're wanting to buy the, the right-of-way, right? It's just...
Anytime you subdivide property, you're required to dedicate the right-of-way in accordance with the master street plan. And technically, a subdivision is two lots. Because you're taking a tract. So you would have two tracts that you want to combine into one lot and then create two lots from that instead of having three?
Yeah, I'm just trying not to, you know, donate an acre of land.
Well, I think Katie was saying that we're not looking at donation of an acre of land because there's already a utility easement across there. Was that purchased by Springdale Water or was that donated for the water line? I don't know, we haven't done research into that stuff. And the amount that she had calculated was a lot less than an acre. Excuse me, do you want to table this and come in and sit down and talk to us and see if we can figure something out? You will have to reapply because it's already been tabled once. But maybe we can answer some questions for you if, if you want to sit down and do that.
Okay, and do you look at it different if it's a, if I'm looking to build a subdivision versus just a personal residence or?
If you are subdividing the property, it doesn't matter if you're dividing it into two commercial lots, two single-family lots or anything. Once you, if the definition of subdivision, the requirement for donation of right-of-way is part of that process. And then the waiver of, you don't have to do street improvements because you're only doing a single-family home. You would be required to do the sidewalk. That's the only requirement when you do single-family homes like that, so.
Okay, so if I build my house, technically I would be required to build 950-foot sidewalk?
No, you would only need to build on the part that you're putting the house on. So it would be the 420 feet.
Yeah. And the payment in lieu of that would be an estimated cost that your engineer would submit, the engineering department would agree to. Once you make that payment, then your requirement for sidewalk goes away when, when the street is done in the future.
Okay, I'm okay with the table. Can I just ask one last question? I promise I'll leave. My process on this, if I, if I, if I wasn't supportive of that, would I still be able to have the option to talk about this at the city council if I elected to?
If the planning commission denies the variance, it goes to city council. The waiver is the, the planning commission making a recommendation to the city council and the city council is the only one that can make a decision on, because if you don't pay for it, then the taxpayers have to pay for it and the city council is the only one that can commit city dollars in the future.
Got it.
So if you have it voted on tonight and if either of those are denied, I mean, if the variance is denied, you can appeal that to city council and the recommendation will come from the planning commission on the waiver of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to go ahead and hear it?
But the, the recommendation is either I would build a sidewalk?
Or do payment in lieu of? Those were probably, now I can't speak for the planning commission itself, but it kind of looks like those are your two options.
Okay. And the payment in lieu of would be for a 950-foot?
No, Katie just told you how many feet it was. It's not the full 900.
It's only the lot that you're putting the house on right now. So when that house is finished, we wouldn't issue occupancy until the sidewalk was put in or the, it was waived.
Or you post a bond for the sidewalk, you get the C of O and let the rest of it go through. Are you close to being ready to move into your house?
No, I'm framing right now.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm glad you came in before you were ready to move in and then we have to figure out how to get you into the house. That usually creates a crisis.
That's fair. Okay.
So we could vote on this variance for right-of-way dedication and the waiver, or you could table it and try to decide, you know, what you want to do. Or we could, the other option, you asked earlier what your options are. I think, I think what the commission would like to see is a sidewalk being built to connect to all the subdivisions back toward the other way. Whether that's done by, we recommend that, that you do that or you do payment in lieu. Where we, the city would do it when they got ready to widen that street and improve it.
Yeah.
So I think that's what's kind of on the table.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I would, given the fact of how far it is between the subdivision that's being built and the very small subdivision across the street from me, I'm struggling with thinking about paying for that for one individual house. So I just, I would ask for a variance to... So I just, I would ask for a variance to...
So you, I mean, if that's the case, we can just vote on it tonight and you can, if, depending on what happens, you can repeal it to city council. If that's what you'd like to do.
Okay.
Yeah, so the variance request for right-of-way dedication, that'll be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Couch. That fails eight to one. Then the, I don't know, do we need to take, I guess, is it separate, the waiver?
Yeah. You have the right to appeal that decision. You have to file your appeal with the city clerk's office within 15 days indicating why you think the planning commission's decision is an error and you have to notify the adjacent property owners again. Once you submit it to the city clerk, she'll tell you what date the council will hear your appeal. Okay?
The next up is the waiver of street improvements, which in this case is a sidewalk since you're building a single-family home. This will be a motion to forward to city council for recommendation for approval or denial, or you could restate it as payment in lieu of. This will require a motion in a second.
So motion to move to city council?
For approval of the waiver, denial of the waiver?
Approval of the waiver.
Okay. I need a second. Motion by Mr. Cardio.
Second.
Second by Mr. Couch. So that fails eight to one as well. So both these requests failed here, you can appeal that. Patty will give you the specifics.
Well, staff will make the, or the resolution going to the council recommend not to waive the...
Right.
Not to waive it.
The recommendation from this planning commission is to deny the waiver.
Right.
No, it was to approve, right?
If you make that motion, then we know what we're sending to council.
I'd move, I would motion that planning commission recommend to deny the waiver to council.
Really what we just did, because we... Two approved, yeah. Right.
I second that motion.
Now we have a clear motion. Is to recommend denial of the waiver request. If that is approved, that will be the recommendation made to the council. Okay? Everybody got that?
Can we vote again? So the motion will go forward to the city council to deny the, this waiver request.
And you will have a chance to plead your case before the city council on the, on the waiver too, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you file the appeal, they'll both be heard at the same time? So you don't have to come twice? So it may not automatically go to the meeting on the 25th, depending on when you file your appeal.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is R-25-10 QB ME LLC. They're requesting rezone from A1 to SF2. And then also they're asking for a variance for reduction of side setback. This is presented by Martin Recker.
Good evening. This parcel, as it is presently zoned, is an agricultural, is non-compliant with the setback. It's an older property. It was recommended that this gets rezoned, so we'll have a setback of eight feet. Based on the, the survey that we've got, we, we're pretty confident it's within that, but just as a, as an extra variance to be put in there for up to five feet, we're definitely confident that it's within that period. The plan for the property is just to, to improve it within its current footprint, but in order to get that building permit, we need to get the, the non-compliance taken care of.
Thank you. Steph?
How current is your survey?
2009.
And that's what it looks like?
Yes.
Okay, we would recommend that you get a new survey to make sure that what we're looking at is correct. On the rezoning request, the rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies as recommended for approval. Appropriate locations for single-family and multifamily residential development should be provided based on accessibility, site suitability, utility availability, neighborhood compatibility, environmental factors. The thing that's missing on that survey is where's your septic tank? And is it contained in that lot itself?
It is. And it is to the, on the big yard on the, on the right side.
Okay, we really need something to verify that so we know that you're not building over your septic system. That's why you can't tell it on that survey?
Okay.
Okay?
We, I have been to the health department and we've looked that over and she gave a recommendation to the building department based on...
Okay, did she have a permit for the existing septic system that's on there and she knew exactly where it was?
Yes, yeah, there's a plan.
Okay, well then we need that for sure to make sure you wouldn't be on top of that.
Did we not?
I believe we did.
Yes.
And we're not changing the footprint at all.
Yeah, that should be, that should be on file.
Okay, we just need to make sure that your septic system is contained in the, in this, the lot itself.
We, we did.
Okay.
We did verify that, yes. That's actually the very first thing that we did.
Any public comment?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking if anybody has any comments about your request. Commissioners? If not, this will be a call for the vote. The first call of the vote would be to rezone from A1 to SF2.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Austin. That passes nine zero. The next is to approve the variance reduction from side setback from eight foot to five foot, also a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Clement. That also passes nine zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance and the, and the rezoning goes to council on the 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. First one is PP 24-05 County Line Square Subdivision, presented by Bates &amp; Associates.
Brayden Wise with Bates &amp; Associates. I'm here to answer any questions. This had come in before. It had been approved previously. We did make a change to the site and added a poolhouse and, and replaced one of the buildable lots. So we, we are coming back through a site amenity.
So you have one less lot because you have a poolhouse, well, you have a POA that, that takes care of that as common area. We would need that as covenants when we get to the final plat that creates that POA. Otherwise, who's going to maintain it? Sorry, one too many questions, right? I mean, you're creating a common structure that who's, how's it going to be maintained?
Hey, this is Mike Baumann, one of the owners of the subdivision. Yes, we are amending the covenants to make sure that it is contained and handled by the POA. And it will be in the covenants that we supply for final plat.
Okay, will that be the only common area in the subdivision?
No, there's other common areas that are in the subdivision and those will also be dedicated back to the POA and we will have a promissory note to fund the POA when the subdivision's plat's recorded.
Okay. Good.
Staff comments?
I have no comments. From planning, in addition to standard comments, we appreciate the additional parking that's being provided and there was some discussion on the monument sign locations and they are acceptable as long as you stay out of water sewer easement.
Thank you.
Any public comments? Commissioners? If not, this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments?
Motion by Mr. Usain.
Second.
Second by Ms. Keith. She used her button. That passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is PP 25-04 Jacobs Crossing Phase Four and Five, revised from previous PP 24-14, presented by ESI.
Thank you, Jason Apple with ESI. Answer any questions?
Basically, you have a new preliminary plat that meets the zoning requirements for an SF2.
SF2, yes.
So you're down from 94 lots to 82, is that what it is?
Yes, 82.
Okay.
I don't know what it was before.
And it's the same layout as we had before, correct? Okay.
Staff comments, please?
I don't have any comments on the plat itself. Most of mine are for construction plans. I do think we need to look at the parking islands. I think we need just a few more sprinkled in there. But other than that, that's, that's really my main comment. Last time this plat went through, it did have the waiver requested for the stubout to the south to Ivy Lane. So if you guys reapproved this plat, you'd be also reapproving that waiver.
Thank you for that clarification.
In addition to standard comments for planning, update note nine on sheets one and two to include lot seven. Just add a column to the lot size table or create a separate table that includes the lot widths at the front setback. It's really just for a particular few lots, but you can do all of them if you would like. And further information is needed regarding the proposed entrance sign for the subdivision, specifically the location and its dimensions.
Any public comments? Please come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Bobby Cole, 4293 St. Alma's Street and the enclave, which is located on Ivy Lane. I think I was here the last time this was presented and I want to say I thank you for accommodating to the SF2. I know that our residents appreciate that and I know I do too. I just wanted to come by and voice some of the, some of the concerns that I had before and just to keep them out there for us all. One of the things that I'm still concerned a little bit about is of course the fact of the floodplain that's on this location. And most of you, I know that across the street on that other subdivision that's being developed right across, I know they're still having some serious problems with the water drainage that's on that land. Of course, this goes right into the floodplain and all the water that's draining off of there goes right into Lake Fayetteville. And of course, our subdivision, the enclave, is completely surrounded by that floodplain and so I'm a little concerned with that. I'm also a little bit concerned because I know that the last time that I was here, that Mr. Cloud stated that, that this commission was struggling to find growth and to allow people to own a home so that we can look for more density. And one of the areas, building homes and that traffic safety is a secondary concern. I do want to say that one of the mission statements that y'all have, and I'm just reading number one, to promote the public health, safety, order, convenience, prosperity in general wherefore the citizens. With the development of these 80-plus homes, the 120 that's right across the street on George Anderson, and also the 200 homes that are right across the street, my biggest concern is the blind spots again on Don Tyson, coming off of George Anderson. And with 200 homes right there in that area, there's, there's a blind spot. And I, I think you've made a comment about, we might do a traffic study there. Please, I've just, I'm, I'm begging you at this point, saying the concern here is, I appreciate the homes being built, not going to contest that. I need to look at the safety concerns that's going to be dealt with, with all of these homes that are coming off, coming on to Don Tyson. So please look at that and take that in mind as this is being developed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
So if the commission would like to, you could ask the developer to do a traffic study to see if any improvements like a light would be warranted for this subdivision.
In the meantime, can you speak toward the floodplain? I'm assuming that you've looked at that and have a good plan. They've presented you with a good plan, can you comment on that? Katie?
Right, so I think there are about 21 homes that will be in the floodplain after this is done. None of the floodways being disturbed because that's prohibited. I've been told that all the lots are going to be filled, which should keep the homes themselves from flooding, but it, you know, it will take away floodplain storage from the creek system in general. However, our, this is compliant with our flood zoning currently, our flood zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
What's the protocol based on what you said of the traffic study, of how it's been handled in the past? I don't know that I've, since I've been on here, we've done one specific to a project?
Well, normally we look at a subdivision that has a significant, more, larger number of lots to be added to a collector's street or arterial street. I just want to remind everybody, this was a school site. And think of what impact a school would have had on this site compared to these number of homes is quite a bit less. Don Tyson was designed as an arterial street to handle that. All the traffic is designed to come out of the subdivision to go on to George Anderson, which is being widened to a collector's street. And it may be sometime in the future that there needs to be some kind of traffic control at that location. That's your prerogative to ask the developer. I don't know that you can require that as a requirement of approving the preliminary plat. I mean, what would that be based on?
Yeah, if you guys remember, the first time we saw this, they had a, a third entrance exit onto Ivy Lane. We felt like due to the Ivy Lane road, the width of it, the lack thereof anyway, that that would be better if it didn't empty into that street and the developer made that adjustment.
Jason, do you have a feeling for the number of daily vehicle? Have, have you all looked at any of that stuff? In general, do you look at those? Katie, do you have any identified numbers of what we would see from a subdivision this size?
No, in, in general, I'm, I'm not concerned about there needing to be additional improvements on Don Tyson to support this subdivision.
There are no more comments? This will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments?
By Mr. Couch. Second by Mr. Cardio. This passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is board of adjustment, B-25-06 James and Janelle McMahon, presented by James McMahon.
Hello? I have a, we, my wife and I bought a house on Bronco in October and there was a six-foot fence around the back and the sides of our house. And we could see into our back neighbor's house and they can see in ours and our neighbor on the side, we can see in there. So I, I changed it to, to be seven feet. And before I did that, I went to check out the ordinance. I don't know if y'all can pull up an ordinance, but it's section 130-6, parentheses 2.3. I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, but fences located within or bounding a rear or side yard are permitted at a height not to, not to exceed six feet. But then there's an exception right after that. It says, except as follows. Fences must be built with recognized fencing materials. So to me, the devil's in the details, as they say. I interpret that as being, as long as I build my fence with recognized fencing materials, there's an exception to the six-feet, six-foot fence. So I've already built the fence and I would like to not have to take it down.
Just for clarification, because you're a corner lot, you have two fronts and two sides.
You know, I've learned that since I lived there. I never knew that, but I understand how that works now, yes.
So that, that fence that's on that side to the north is actually on a front setback and it's only supposed to be three feet if it's in front of the, the structure itself. If you brought it back to where it was flush with the edge of the house, you know, that's different, but...
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm sorry.
Can you go back to the, to the drawing?
It is, it lines up with the front of the house.
Well, no, it doesn't, because it juts out to the north beyond where that front edge of the house is, because you have two fronts.
Okay, well, I built it right where the last fence was.
I understand that. But that fence was in violation of the ordinance too, but anyway.
Oh. So if I had...
And the exception doesn't mean that you can do more than the standard height just because you're using the right materials. You're the first person I've ever heard...
Well, it's an interpretation, but it is valid.
Well, okay. I'm not going to argue that's not the interpretation that's ever been used, but okay.
Only because that's the mindset. I understand that as a committee and as a city council, the standard is six feet. But that's not what it says, otherwise it wouldn't say, "Except as follows." It was written wrong, if that's the intent.
Any public comment regarding this request? Any commissioners, any comments? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Any comments from...
He doesn't like even wants to make a comment, he's kind of...
We did look at site distances at the intersection, and it's not an issue for this one.
And it's a nice-looking fence.
Nice-looking fence.
I think it's nice, thank you.
I wouldn't want to tear it down either.
Yeah, it's going to be awfully expensive, and it's, I don't, no, I, yes, I don't want to tear it down. And we're going to do, we're just going to keep building, we're going to, we're trying to make it look really nice. The whole house. I've actually just, I thought I was going to have to get a variance, we're building a pergola in the front as well. And turns out, we were in the setback range, so we got a permit for that and don't have to get a variance after all.
That's good.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Cardio. That passes nine to zero, and we'll tighten up our codes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't do it for my sake, but...
Hey, if you found out, other people can, so, you know. Next up is B-25-07, Shiloh Christian Elementary. This is a variance for increased wall sign from thirty-two foot square to one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-and-a-half foot square, presented by Mike Jones. And there he is.
Well, you know, we've gotten this far, all the way down, and y'all haven't smiled until we got to his fence issue. So I'm glad to see you're happy by the time you get to me on that part of, I'm Mike Jones, I'm with Best Sign Group. I'm representing Shiloh Christian School. As y'all may be aware, they have, are proceeding with a large expansion to the elementary school there on site, moving out to the south end of the property. I'm sure you're familiar with the site, it's a very large piece of property extending south all the way down to Cambridge Street and Chapman on that part of it. And what you're looking at is that they are wanting to properly labor the school. This is going to be their new entrance for their elementary Christian school. It is in right in the middle of the back of their parking lot on the south side. The numbers that really aren't there, that I think that are particularly important that you understand and see, based on the sidelines, they're over eight-hundred feet away from Johnson Road at the nearest point, right on the south line to the west side. They're nearly fifteen-hundred feet all the way down to the back of Chapman. And then they're over eight-hundred feet again on the other east-hand side, east of the road as well. All they're asking for is to have proper size signage appropriate to the size of the building as well as to the distance from the road on that part of it. So we're requesting a variance from, the requested are the stated thirty-two square feet to one-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet. This is a non-lit sign, so again, it will not be visible at night as well.
Well, you answered my question before I asked it.
There you go.
Any public comment about this request? Staff comments? Commissioners, anything you want to say? If not, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Ms. Keith. That passes nine to zero, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a nice evening.
You as well. Next up is B-25-09, Northern Hills MHC LLC. This is a variance for reduction in front setbacks on multiple lots, presented by Peter Shop.
Good evening, my name is Pete Shoppe, I'm here for Northern Hills Manufacturing Home LLC. I'm here requesting a variance to 212, which is the manufactured home park ordinance for thirty-foot setbacks from the roadway centerline to building. We're proposing eight new homes within our community. The purpose of the variance is to request to allow dimensional variations due to irregular community layout to allow the installation of eight affordable manufactured homes. With this, we are currently matching the existing configuration of the community with these requested dimensional variations. The community has existing homes where the distance from home to roadway is less than the current. The twenty-five, we currently will, the twenty-five-foot roadway widths as required by code would still be met. The roads are not reduced, the roads are still twenty-five feet as required. And as everyone knows, Northwest Arkansas has severe affordable housing. With this, this will allow us to build eight homes. And we typically, within the communities that we run, we're able to fill those homes within eighteen days of completion.
Staff comments?
I want to start with the one location on the south side is in the floodplain. So you're not going to be able to put a mobile home there.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
The one at the very south end of the...
I think it's C-18, C-15, rather. That one is in the floodway, you can't build anything on that lot.
I will notate.
Okay, and then the other lots that you have there, if, are you putting smaller manufactured homes on it? Are they going to be the standard size of all the rest of them?
They're smaller than the current footprint, current homes are in there. I believe these are going to be sixteen-by-forty-sixes.
Okay, and you guarantee they're not going to be larger than that? Because what you're doing is creating a situation where you're taking up parking spaces, which requires people to park in the street. The size of the street is what it was then. When you get everybody parking on the street, you're not going to be able to get a fire truck down through there. And that gives a little bit of space, as it is in those open areas, to, you know, create a little extra parking, a little other places to go. When you start putting manufactured homes in there, we've lost that capability. And there's not a lot of open space in this whole subdivision.
There will still be off-street parking for those homes.
Two spaces?
Two spaces, yes.
And they're not too close to the street?
Correct, because they'll be off the street.
Okay. Steve, you want to comment on this one?
Will it increase any on-street parking?
It will not.
Okay, but we got our on-street parking going on now, how are you going to keep these from increasing on-street parking?
For those, for the homes that we're putting in, they have off-street parking, they have dedicated spaces. Right now, you know, we enforce that the residents park within their, with the spots that are allowed.
Okay, what about when they have visitors?
We do have visitor spots located up by the office.
So if I'm down there at the south end on that, on one of those other streets, and I have a visitor, they got to park up by the office and walk?
I believe we have two other spots for off-street, that are dedicated for non-residents as well, for visitors.
Well, I can tell you, my opinion is, there's plenty of units in there already. And these small little areas, I'm very concerned about what happens if we put mobile homes on there. And I didn't see anything on here that you were guaranteeing that you were going to put a smaller-sized manufactured home on those.
Yeah, I drove through this part today, and you got a lot of homes in there. And I counted fourteen vehicles on the street. It's three o'clock in the afternoon, so I doubt that's, well, it could be anything. But my thought is, I agree, we do have, you know, we need to look at affordable housing in lots of different ways. But after driving through the site today, it felt really full to me, as is. So personally, I couldn't get comfortable adding more units, even if they were smaller. Is there any public comment to this request? Please come up, state your name, address.
Good afternoon, I'm Ken Wagle, I also work for RHP Properties. These plats, they already had homes on them. We're not adding additional housing, but just replacing the homes that are not there currently. These have all had houses on them at one point.
How long ago?
That I can't tell you, I have not looked back into the history of it. But there's parking there dedicated for them as they were already on site.
Ed, do you have a comment?
I've had to deal with this for many years now, with trying to, this is a non-conforming manufactured home park. It was, the ordinance was adopted after it was created. So we had many sites on this thing where we had trailer houses. I use an old map, and actually, it's the old survey from when it was purchased in, I want to say, 2003. So I use that survey where all the houses were at the time, those are existing non-conformities, and we let those go. We also let them add trailer houses where they could meet the ordinance for a manufactured home park. So both of those things, why we can't fit houses on them now where there used to be houses is because they had deemed to put other houses that made them too close to the new house once they move it in. So you can look at the old photographs, and you can see where there might have been a fifty-foot trailer, now there's a sixty or a seventy-foot trailer. And so that intrudes into that space, and now they can't fit another trailer in there. So they're trying to go through a smaller trailer. The only other thing I will say is that there's one of these that's fourteen feet. Fourteen feet on a twenty-five-foot road, you take half of that, that's a foot and a half from the road. When we fight a fire, there is a sidewalk generally, there's the road, there's a sidewalk, and there is some setback. If you don't have any setback whatsoever, the radiant heat from a trailer fire is too intense to park a truck on the street in order to fight the fire. So now you have to either park up or down from it and work your way back to it. This has always been a problem with trailer parks in general, though, by the way.
Noted, and just for clarity, we have seven of these eight lots that are projected to be sixteen-by-forty-eight-foot houses, which is smaller than what was there to begin with. So we have some maneuverability to keep them further off the road. We'd have to do some site plans if everything was permitted to be able to give you an exact number off-center of road if necessary. One of them was even scheduled to be a sixteen-by-forty, just using near map as a guide to keep us to a point where we were able to determine that distance. And as you can see on there, the closest one was D-18, being fourteen foot from center of road. But there are homes in there now, multiple homes, as you guys have probably seen, well encroached, even tighter than that. So we don't want to be pushing that limit, we just want to try to be able to fill these homes and provide something for somebody to move into.
Yeah, the existing homes are existing non-conformities. I cannot legally tell you, you can't have an existing home where there wasn't existing home. And we've always used the practice, where there was a home before, that size, you can put the exact same size back into that hole.
Yep, and utilities are already present, I mean, even the gas has been redone very recently.
The piers are there, everything's there, to put a home there, the problem was, if you look at them, they'll come in, and then there's a house that comes right in like that, and now there's, because they made, put a bigger house.
Correct, because of the layout, we're going to be constricted, and we realize that as well. And if there's a lot pertinent that just doesn't fit, we wouldn't then fund it for our own safety to a home that we couldn't fill, right, if it doesn't make sense. So I guess I just wanted to be clear on that, these are not new spaces. This is a pre-existing home space that just is going to get rebuilt on.
Well, I think what Ed is saying, it's a non-conforming use to start with, we'll be making the non-conformity worse in some cases when we start putting homes back in some of these lots. Because what's been done over the year, we don't normally make non-conforming uses any worse.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that input. Any other public comment? Commissioners? If there's no comment, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
By Mr. Couch. That fails non-to-zero.
You have the right to appeal the Planning Commission's decision to the city council. You have to notify the city clerk within fifteen days that you're filing an appeal, to state why you think the Planning Commission was in error, and you have to notify the adjacent property owners again. And once it's filed with the clerk, she'll tell you when it's going to be heard by city council. Okay?
Thank you.
In an attempt to make sure everybody around me was paying attention, I skipped B-25-08, David and Deborah Hoeforth, presented by Jessica Hoeforth. This is a variance reduction, a variance reduction of rear setback from thirty-five foot to twenty-five foot. Thank you for your patience, and I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Jessica, David, and I hope you have everything you need, because it should all be there.
Ed, do you have a comment on this one?
My concern here is that your, the electrical line is going over top of the building. Is there another slide?
Do what?
It shows the power line going over top of the building there.
Over the fire, right over the fireplace there, yeah.
First of all, is that a public, is that, is that an Ozark line, or is that a private line?
Swepco.
It's a Swepco line? Yeah, there's a prescribed easement that goes with that line. Even though it may not be showing on this drawing, but there's an easement that goes in line, you can't build on a utility easement. Whether there's an easement or not, there's a prescribed easement because there's a wire above it.
I don't know, you already permitted it, so...
You have a permit already?
I think so, yeah. He applied for the permit, all we had to do is get the, the problem was the variance on the other property behind us or whatever, we own the property behind us too, so...
Ed, are you aware that this apartment...
I'm not aware that they had a permit, I assume that they did. And I could see where the permit could be issued until an inspector went out there and looked up and said, hey, there's a power line here.
I don't think you can build it under a power line, so we probably need to table this, and y'all get with building inspection and go look at it and see what additions or corrections can be made to not build it under a power line.
Okay.
Okay?
I mean, I guess there's not like, I mean, I thought he talked about something like, it was, if it was so high, or if the power line was high enough above it, or something, I mean, is that...
Well, then the power company has to recognize the encroachment in writing to allow you to do that. We won't let you build in that easement unless the power company recognizes that encroachment. Do you have something in writing from them saying you can do that?
No.
Okay, so that's the other thing you'd have to have.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Just to clarify that too, if it's a service line, and it's not owned by Swepco, there's no easement involved, then you have to be twelve feet above the peak of the house, or the building.
So is that, I mean, do we not know that, is that not in record what it is? If it's a service line, we're not?
Well, you're going to have to tell us, we don't have it.
If it's a service line, then I'd have to go look at the pole. If there's a tag on the pole that says Swepco, then it's their line. If there's not a tag on the pole, it's a private line, then you just have to be twelve feet below the thing, which is close to, but I don't, you know you're building better than I do.
Is there any way, I mean, to keep, so I guess a comment would be that they could verify if it was a service line or not. But I wonder if we could approve it pending that, or is it better just to table it and let them come back a month from now?
We don't have a problem with them granting the variance, and then we could go back...
Verify it.
Go back in later and confirm that the lines are the proper right.
Sure.
If they're not the proper right, they'll just have to raise it up.
Yeah.
So we can approve it with the variant, with, subject to being a certain height and not being a Swepco pole or whatever?
So you have no idea roughly, you have no idea roughly how high that is from your structure?
I don't.
I mean, our contractors looked at it when he submitted for everything, I mean, it's...
There's a note there, it says it's twenty-three feet above grade, which, at the peak of the roof, which would, depending upon how big, twelve feet from that, that's eleven feet, I don't know how much peak you got on your structure.
How tall is your fireplace?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know that any of us have a problem with the variance on the setback, I think it was just concern about the power line, obviously. But if, Ed, if you're good with this, approving the variance pending, you know, verification of all the other things.
Yeah, that's fine. If you could contact our office, ask for Tom, he can come out, take a look at it, and we can make sure we clarify.
This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Couch. That passes, so your variance request has been approved, if you do the things we talked about, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now to waiver requests, we have W-25-06, Benar Otrilio, asking for a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Kelly Road. Go ahead once, they gave up. Okay, we'll move on to the next one, W-25-07, Reliable Poultry Parking Expansion, waiver request of street improvements on East Huntsville Avenue, presented by James Gertz.
I'm James Gertz with EDA, requesting this variant, or this waiver request for street improvements on East Huntsville.
Katie, do you have a recommendation from engineering?
So we're just talking about expanding the sidewalk, correct?
Well, that's what I was wanting to kind of understand a little better, because I wanted to look at the street section, it's a median street now, because it's a principal arterial, so I didn't know what exactly was needed on that, on our piece of property.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Because then we're talking move curb, move drainage.
Which would be just a small section for this that you're working on now, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a frontage on our non-large-scale project. What came about is this is now a principal arterial. It was a major collector, if I'm correct in remembering what this was. So it's a five-lane road with curb and gutter and sidewalks already. I don't know if the sidewalks meet the new code for width, but they were built to those standards back in 2008, I think this road went in. And I know, it's now a principal arterial that's a median, and we are dedicating the additional ten feet of right-of-way for when the city wants to do road improvements, but we did not know what to do about the street improvements.
Sorry, I was under the impression we were just talking about the sidewalk, so my bad on that. We might have to look at this a little further.
Is holding you up on something?
We're doing a non-large-scale, I think this is like the last item on it. It kind of came about that, oh, we didn't know that this road changed, because I've done some projects on reliable previously, and it never came up because it was meeting match the street plan.
Okay. Can we table this and come back?
I guess typically when we're working with an existing road, we're going to try and fit our new section as well as we can in that road. So I, you know, it makes sense not to completely move this curb and gutter
Yeah.
onto this one piece of property. I don't think that would be helpful in this situation.
So if they're willing to dedicate the additional right-of-way, then if the city decides to move the whole thing, then we're taken care of, is what we're saying. So engineering doesn't have a problem with granting this waiver, or recommending that the waiver be granted? Okay?
Any public comment? Commissioners? No comment, this will be a motion to forward to City Council's recommendation for either approval or denial of this waiver request.
Motion to recommend to approve.
So motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Reynolds? Sorry, had a little yawn there. That passes nine to zero. Continue with your small-scale development.
Thank you.
I believe that's it. Down to the Planning Director's report. Patty?
Our work session this month is set for the eighteenth at 5:00 p.m. We are scheduling H3 studios to come in and present the final Southeast Downtown Area Housing Study and the Parking Study with their recommendations for implementation and amendments to the Form-based Code. So that work session is set for 5:00 p.m. This also needs to be presented to the council committee, council committee meeting, which would be the night before, but that is a holiday. So if the council decides to move their committee meeting to Tuesday night, which is what they've done the last couple of times, we would have the work session starting at 5:00, and then at 5:30, the council would come in, we would make the presentation to both groups at the same time. And if we still had items we need to discuss, we could go to the other community room to finish up if we needed to. That way, they only have to make one presentation if that's the case. If not, council meets at a different time or a Monday night, then it'll be just a presentation to you guys. Okay?
Thank you.
I don't have anything else.
We should adjourn.